The giant orders.
Good morning, Mark Haltz and Bill, CDB Director. And I'm here to talk about the potential of the website redesign for our department. Typically, a website gets redesigned every four years. As I said, our last redesign was a month ago. So we're a little behind the roadmap. Civic Plus is the company that does, I think, most of the county websites. So we did get a quote from them. There are two separate numbers. Here looking at the first one, which is a premium redesign package. That is going to be eleven, eleven thousand, two hundred dollars. The one that we would like to go for is the ultimate redesign, which is thirteen thousand, six hundred. And the reason for that is there is a lot more bells and whistles to it. There, for the price increase, there are, there's about seven thousand dollars more products and just the, like the carousels, which the carousels are when you look at a website. It's like a picture that just flips and carousels to other things. And then you see the price that's next to that, and it's three thousand sixty-nine or four thousand three. That would be an annual, like, maintenance fee, if you will. So, again, we, we were, in working with Clay, is the guy who works for Civic Plus. There are a couple of other CBB and, and DMO, Destination Marketing Organization websites that they have showed us and that we've looked at. So we are able to kind of cherry pick where we like from all of those websites and make it our own. It does, he says that it does take somewhere between three and four months to get it all done and launch it. With everything that we have in the works coming up for 2026, we figure the sooner we can get this started, the better. So then that way, when 2026 will run, you know, we'll have this fresh new website.
Do they have it now?
Yes, yes. Yeah, it's, it's nice that it's outdated for, for what other entities have. And again, not, not trying to be like other entities, but we, we want to be in the same level, so. We do. And it's been about twelve years since the last redesign. Yeah, yeah, I mean, and it is, it's, 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 it's fine when you look at it, just when you click on it. But it's not very user-friendly, like when you start clicking into things, it redirects you into things that not necessarily to the right pages. And that's not, that's not any fault of our own. It is, there's been some lack of communication between our department and Civic Plus to update things. Manny goes in there and updates the calendar, for example, that's a good one, it's, it's pretty nautical. Right now, we go in there and there's like a literal calendar, like a the newer websites or the newer designs for that has a carousel calendar where it's not going to show you stuff that's already happened. It's just going to show you your current stuff and upcoming stuff, which is, which is what, what we want as far as a tourism website, though, because you don't want to, you know, the things that happened this weekend are done. You're not going to come visit us because that already happened. You're going to come visit us because of the stuff that you have. So our ask is for the ultimate redesign, which is what we, where we think will get more bang for our money. And it'll, it'll be a collaborative effort where their designers will, will reach out to us. And then we will, you know, tell them, hey, we like this from the Savannah website. Let's say we like this from, you know, the Manhattan Beach website. So they do a lot of government websites, and that's kind of their forte. And thank you. And then the only Civic Plus. So then the only other thing I have for you guys is the updated backdrop for our website. I didn't I know, but the only thing that we changed is the font on it. We are now using the only, the, so the reason that we changed the font is because we're using the fonts that are part of the mammoth. What do they call that? The branding that we, that we spent a lot of money to, to get them, so. And then I did ask them this tiger presentation, and that's the, the one that we had mentioned before. I did ask about the difference in doing the fonts in black or in white. Because it's a backlit, they suggested doing the white because it'll, it'll show through more than the black. So, so that's it, is I don't, I don't know if I need to get another approval. Or if you guys this is, it's been a long time.
So you talked about it before, this is just what it looks like.
Yeah, because I think yeah, and I, I did email it to her as well, so she had it. You can, so that's going to be initially what we have. And the reason that we decided on the three panels is because there are some times when we only have like a table instead of a full ten by ten. And I think when I first got here, we had also said that we were going to shy away from doing any booths that were bigger than a ten by ten. We don't, it, like a double booth. So that's why we're doing the three separate panels. And then this way, as we get updated pictures or we get some, you know, feature something in particular, then we can order a, a new, it's like a sleeve that goes over, it's a frame with the lights inside. So we can just, you know, update those as we need them. And it's similar to the, to the backdrop that we have now with the small square panels. That, you know, they just print the stuff on there. So yeah, that was it. Again, I don't know if I need approval for that, or I just wanted to show you guys that we are using fonts now that, that we're on. So that's the, that's the case that all of the panels and the, the frame goes in. And then it serves as, instead of having a table in the front, it, we can leave it open. And then that comes with a TV screen or a monitor that pops up. And then with that is where we are going to put the images that are going to rotate. Since, you know, the, the backdrop itself is just going to be one solid. And depending on what we do, so like when we go to the women's fair, then we can do all, we can have pictures of, you know, all of the things that we do that would, that would call like for a girls' weekend. So we even have pictures on there of different hair storms and spas and events that are driven towards specific gifts. So like when we do the outdoor travel shows, like the, the one in Denver that we do and the one in Nebraska, it can be all about the fishing tournaments and stuff like that, so. And it makes, it's compact. And so not only does it serve as the, the carrying case or the, the travel case, but then it adds your tabletop, so. So you don't have to tuck it behind a mountain.
Obviously, there's no place for whoever's working, they except you go there.
Yeah, now, they, they feature that the way that, because that's their, you know, maca. They feature it so that you can see all of that equipment, it's just going to go in that box. And we can, you know, we can certainly, we'll likely take tables and stuff because we'll have to put our different brands and whatever else up too. When yeah, yeah, something to entice people to, to come look and yeah, mint for a little while. Yeah, I just wanted to bring it to, to show you guys, so.
Did you see my email about your first, you know, picture of the parish myself and Keith, the, the picture that you had has Keith himself and parish there with the opposite one, and most of the pictures turned around.
If you want to, I mean, we could, she, she literally you know, she sandwiched it, it could be a Keith sandwich, and that's what I want.
No, you had said, you said that the way that they were listed is myself and Keith, I, I just, I, that, the picture that you sent has Keith myself and
Yeah, I mean, she, she Yeah, she, she could swap it around, if, like, if you wanted Keith to be in the middle, that's fine. And then, and then it's that, or we could make it with like a big back. Yes, yes, it'll be, it'll I don't think, I don't know, there
Well, that's what she had.
Yeah, I mean, I, I asked, I, in the, I texted her and asked her to do that while I was at worship retreat, and five minutes later, she Yeah, I think when Trish gets off, we'll do All right, that's all I have. All right, thank you, guys.
It's just right here, hard to refuse to stop, so there's a bunch of people coming to stop. Always my semi here, license sirens refuse to stop, we're never speeding, but just cannot stop. Maybe they're just going to drive herself to jail and turn themselves in. I don't know if this is true, but we're like, no, because the original traffic stop was no tag, tried to tackle two years. Riley's going to drive here and pay for his tag.
Riley, I'm going to go chat.
Well, we have a person up there doing in, in their PD, but it's our boy, important.
Okay, so Riley's going to take a long ride.
No, so we have, yeah, we have two here, and then and Riley's telling me, just not good, Riley's telling me, so yeah, so you go with him. Yeah, PD there.
Alex isn't still here, is he? Alex been here?
Alex, Alex and Brian do the logo of Ben Chats.
And then the highlight, they're calling them, for the outer space.
Yes, yeah, and then we have the third one that goes there. Yeah, Alex is still here. He likes to remind Brian that he's a senior dentist, but
We enjoyed having when they were here in the office, but it just got too, too crowded and too, too much congestion, I guess, and I'm worried they're going
He is, he is, I mean, that first team should be a little bit easier. I think they won one game, but then after that first playoff game, it's difficult.
Is that Wichita West?
So Wichita West, yes, is that first team, and then they win, assuming Derby's in with Derby, Derby's always tough. Even though Derby has three losses and we only have two, but it's tough. Good one. All right, I'll get rolling if you guys are ready. The average jail population between ten, October eighth and October twenty-first is a hundred and twelve. We worked thirteen accidents in that timeframe. Fifty-one times, we assisted the outside agencies. We had two batteries slash assaults in that timeframe. Zero burglaries. Forty-six citations were issued. We had ninety-seven times that we served civil papers. Zero drug investigations in that two-week timeframe. Four DUIs. Zero murder vehicle thefts. We had ten times we helped with prisoner transports. One sex offense. Zero shots fired. We had one theft in that two-week timeframe. Two hundred and six traffic stops. Zero weapon violations. We have twenty-seven arrests, and that is a total of primary calls, four hundred and fifty-eight with one hundred and four additional calls. For a total of five hundred and sixty-two calls for service in that two-week timeframe. We're sweeping to the point, I don't know if you guys have any other questions about any other matters, but that's the bi-weekly report. I'm going to touch bases, I didn't ask that question, but it went great, I thought. Sound like we had a lot of buy-in and Betsy worked hard on that contract. And I don't think they had too much to change at all. I think it's pretty transparent, pretty fair for both sides, and it just makes sense to me to make a happy day every I think that's something that's real, that's definitely going to happen in the next month or two.
I think they're going to take it there.
Right, right. They asked what date, and I was hoping we can get that implemented by first of the year, and they were on board. We had simply a reason why we can, which is here's to the count of things. That shows good collaboration between it's good to have working relationships, and I know under Sheriff Stoffer, I had a conversation with previous shit, Dan Jackson. And then Dan Jackson was very proud that that happened, that he went to charge for a while, so he was very happy about making that work. From what I think is the one that initially looked at it, and Dan now meaning it's been a long time coming to make this happen. That's for, yeah, dispatch and, and jail, we'll cover jail, they'll cover dispatch operations.
It won't be in a, it'll be like a, an exchange service. Oh, because it's not going to fit the plan of the set, or if they don't want to do that, or whatever.
First of the year, we report back and say that was fine, and we agree on it. You guys have a great day. All right.
I think they started with
Why?
So what, you know, case of common danger.
Yeah, I think it was not a very
I mean, that's
Okay. So the first thing looked like the, the, and test people things. And so you can see with Bill and the project, with Bill for him more than what we were paying out to collect the money. Last month was super exceptional. We've been slowly trending down in the, in August, it was like one five thousand. And it jumped up to ninety thousand a lot of people, because they did. Somebody did an audit with somebody, and we got seventy-four thousand dollars. Just like a third page here. And so that was kind of a, a one-time other email that said there was another audit, and we were going to get seven hundred and some thousand dollars. But then I got another email that said, well, wait a minute, there was a box that was supposed to be checked, it wasn't, or the by the way, right, I was checking, it didn't, one or the other, and so they're now checking to see. And something to do with the World Health Clinic designation for the hospital. I don't know where that's going, I mean, I Yeah, yeah, like, it's, it's, it's like, no, that's So I guess, you know, bottom line, we're, we're continuing to bring in more than it's possible to give. We did have a request to, because all the accounts I put the stuff into is still very confusing. And so, as of Friday, I got a door panel open. And it's running, transferred into that, and it was closed, so it's now under the Public Building Commission. It's just a little bit more security, keep going, maybe something like that. And I had problems this month. Like today, this month, I'm thinking not collecting, but knowing whose money I was getting, because the emails we saw on bail my dad, and finally got that done Thursday. Figuring out, it's since the twenty-ninth of September, you know, the, I thought it was staying, I guess, column became basis and saw on bail, it's going back and forth, it's, it's pointing in the direction the, the main documents are just the the bills that we have, the statements, and whatever, and any questions, I'll know. You know. From your perspective, with. Um. So we, we had the. Their client, Jeremy Myers, come to our last meeting. And, uh, Mr. Klein. Said last meeting, they were redoing fan foils and putting new boilers and smoke alarms and the effect, the smoke detectors, all those things. Now. That's all done. We've got two operating events of boilers. Uh, hot water pumps. With V, V, V. V F Bs. Whatever they do. LED lighting in the hallways, a lot of this, you know, we talked, we still go on that. I, I'm. Not there and always talking about like, they don't do it. They're, they're happy. Um.
That was in there maybe.
That was in N eighty one, right? Um, so the engineer's gotta go back through and do response checks and then get N eighty one will be done. It's seven to eleven. The electrical was in the whole hospital, but, but, um, I don't know what I got. And. They have four electrical rooms being built. On the basement, first floor and second floor, and they're like stacked so they can remember the faces. Bring it up. Uh. And that, I was thinking, is in the old basket. Someplace up there.
They wrapped it like.
Oh, they did. It's quite a nine month project. But here.
Yeah, so they had not. Four or eight. And they're suddenly.
The. Yeah. And, uh. Jeremy would know more about all this. I need to see those outlets back and make sure that it's going through. So, yeah, that's another nine months we can. Is wrapped up. Um. They're gonna have to, when they switch over to this, remember that, like, thing that's clearing it down. And, uh, definitely the process of doing that, and we have them in generator and. You know, keep the hospital ready to get. Uh, do that. After the electrical, then they got wastewater, sinks, toilet showers, and electrical on that whole part of the hospital. On the second and third floors. They're real close to finalizing the final drawings. To figure out kind of a, a phase and plan. Um. Then the kind of like good process of doing that too. Um, they've got other plans too, but they're kind of waiting to see how financially it will get. When all of that works out.
Hmm.
Um. And one of the things is maybe two of them is known roof cockings and their handlers. That we need to place. We talked a little bit about. They were gonna eliminate some bathrooms. And, um. So we asked questions on that. And they are retaining nine full. Clean room showers, toilets and sinks. They're gonna make them. Sleep rooms. So when doctors come in, if they come in from outside or snow days or whatever, they've got a place to stay. And that is gonna be on the north side. Of second floor. And then on the south side. Second floor, they haven't really decided exactly yet what they're gonna. Put in there. There will be wood care and a lot of expansion services. South side of third floor could be cardio lab and cardio pulmonary. As they plan to utilize the nurse station and wait in service of people. Um. But Jeremy's been. Looking at it and says the craftsmanship of the work has been exceptional, very clean, everything looks good. Uh. Jeff talked about remodeling the lab. This is not done with, with our funds. But still, they'll put in their own money to. Uh, getting to the lab or analyzers. They're. Top of line putting, I guess. Which course then requires more electricity and more space and whatever. And so they're having to. Uh, revamp that whole. Lab area. Uh. Or they're doing. You know, putting more money beside you, but you heard maintenance and his own money. Isn't that shell? Questions for Jeremy? They're also talking about the robot. You know, so. Yes, so they're, they're getting a robot which was. Uh, to get a habit. And we're, we're big on new one and we're getting their handy down, but yet it's still. New and improved and different than probably that. So it would be. Even more thanks for certain things. That are past the.
Mike and I were. You were in the.
No, I.
Mike and I were there, but they talked about theater running in. Off of all of this spirit too. The worst. They're really pleased, but now thank you all.
All in all, we, we liked. I do.
Yeah. That's. Now, I found out that they transferred losing. A million dollars a month when they took over. Making a million.
Well, the CEO was there too, and I, I, I don't know his name, but I'm not much, but. They seem to be very positive on the hospital here and all the things that turned around. For the ninety years now and all the things and remaining now, so. A lot of these words, man, you're, you're lost and so they announced, they'll send you something like.
I think it's. Seriously, it told me, maybe, I don't know, they said it, but the office of all this coming in and talking. You know, surgery. So he's gonna be, I know she hasn't been working in feet. But it was. Working here part time or. Or I don't know. But he already seems. I felt like they were pretty high on how this whole thing is going. I think it surprised them how quick that turned around.
That probably. For that. Yeah, Rod was very clear to me. Well. Instantly.
Yeah. And I got it.
Do you have?
I thought it would seem small, I think. It's kind of.
Do you have any other questions?
I don't.
Um. Extension Center, um. Jeremy is visiting with Sean at H and H, or H and M. They're finishing the programming for a freestanding facility to go along with the. Previously submitted remodel. Thing that they found down. You know, they, they're kind of collaborating with the sheriff and trying to get all that together. And, um, then once it's all finished, then you get another important. To do this. And. Do you have any other thing to add?
No, Sean, it's just like they, they were working all finishing that up and then they're presenting that to both of them and he would say. From the. Should be here and not say this to people.
But they're not. Looking. Some of them is very, it's fine, but.
They have the report from just this point. And when I talked to Sean, we did about him by asking if he. In this. In the freestanding portion of it, and it would add him to the other presentation that he did there as well, whether he was taking some of this, picking up the numbers and trying to work those, or at least that they was. You know, there's, there would be some worry, you know, that broke the facility down.
And that's a. Working group. Did not want. What they call, uh. That they incorporate. The old, you know, the system.
Mm hmm.
And now the one. And that's why I don't need the word, right?
Okay.
And that's why I'm going to go to find and start. That's what they recommend.
Or. So they have a single review for that?
Yeah, they have. I plan to solve it. Very.
Okay.
That.
Yeah, certainly, I think when you did it, it seemed. Previously, they've been paid, they've said, this thing, probably.
I don't want to talk this bigger. Thank you.
Yeah, I think. Certainly takes all of me collaborating, working together, putting everything into it. Get people in the right place.
So I. Good job. Thank you very much. I can really say hi to them. I don't think I'm bothered. I didn't see you at all. I was on. That's why I'm.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I just wanted. Thank you. That was. So I want to. Do you know what? Like, oh, I think it's like. So I think I do. And this. The law, so it's a good job. So you want to. Oh, yeah. I always. From where. There is always. My. That's why. You can't do. Things. That's why. And I say. Please. They're. And it's. Can you relate to me? Like, amazing, they clearly been teaching us. Trying to. So far. They didn't. So.
It's a different. And what's it really on? Um. So this. The man has a, a very, very. It was probably the district. People want to. Certain. It was probably the first. What's it called? I am first. The others, yeah, I, I. A lot of this is. In Chris English. And then of course they're combined. It's not mine, that's very first. I. I think a lot of things are why I'm on. Thursday, like sometimes in the house. I mean, that's, you know. It's very. Definitely was nice to meet you. I was bringing you ideas, you know, and. Um, I was surprised, like, no, well, you know, the. The whole. He on radiation, he was what used to be a patient and throw on people, you know. You know, and so I would never know he was sick. You know, how like. I'm sorry, but like that. See, really, I couldn't. Yeah. That's. I can sense it. So. He's leaving today. That is, when's he gone there? No. The middle. I would think. It's like a pumpkin, you know, kids adding in. All the. Al forgot to keep the pumpkin. So all the pumpers. But there was no pumpkin that. That was bad one or that one's. That we have. So I, I wanted to smile anyway. I went back long. About ten or twelve. Heads and. Plus. Something like. Block and stuff. I was gonna say, I gotta go live more for forty to get. For me. She's gonna break that. Wow, well, I'm. Mom, I, I mean. And then it didn't. Cause it did, yes. Well, that's what. I'm still. Uh, they, they had some, uh, pink light. And I think that's. You know. They're down. Yeah, I'm here. I'm. I love. Since you see, I look. One for a big calendar all day, they got longer with all these. The thing I mean, that it seems like. I think I was surprised. I told the young. I didn't like any of the chores. And I thought maybe it's not. There was all this. Pies. I said that the kids. Me, yeah. That's. So I, I told the girl, I don't mind it. I could have found five, but it was last. They were not that great last week. I took these back down there and put I didn't. I didn't mind it in my last week because normally it comes. I know they didn't do it. Didn't they on this? They say he's spraying. They, they all go rough, you know, better, you know. You know. Every time I get sprayed, it's not that. Oh, this is a. They chase the eggs. But he can't. First time when he was little and he started to do that, that was funny. Yeah. Excuse me. Can't say. So anyway, yeah, daddy. Uh, getting, getting over. Getting some. But, yeah. I'm going. Where are Bertie? I wanted her place in summer around the. Yeah. And we probably. Can see the yams. So. I forget. None of these are on, but they're the. I'll find it. I saw it this. Anything there. I didn't, man, maybe it's not playing on. Yeah.
So I will still on to it.
He was, uh, always.
Always.
Yeah. And Jeremy said he's talking in his. That. Performance. Audio. Were they?
Not the same.
Before. And that, that's the. Thousand dollars. So, I don't know. Now, like Nancy says, the city has something that pops down ceiling. But they're, they're gross. And our boys would get out or you better. So, I don't know. I think they need something for. Or my people, it's something I need to.
Yeah.
Oh, that's. They want. Well. Well, Jeremy's talking to. I think I'm going between. From the body. He said, they're the ones that were talking before, well, we got the. Was searching. Thing was, it over thirteen thousand dollars. The guy probably ended up. Put it out. Yeah, they blacked out what we have to have. Now, if my. These two would come out and go with. They, they. Yeah. You can't move it back like. Yeah. And she knew that, but then. You're. Even there. I thought neither.
So. Wow, we both.
Hmm. Yeah.
I believe.
She was. Your way. The room is not, not really. What we're. We have. I like. By. They. I don't. I'm here to take stock, and I'm, I'm, yeah. I mean, I'll pause, we have to. Yeah, well, like, our city, that we have school on Friday. Remember, this is Friday, Friday, so I'm getting out of here. So, I, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm, yeah. Okay. We don't have. See if Peter was gonna come down or not. She talked about it a little bit. You know, the CDC, the hospital, the people, they have self-worked and ground, the city, for us, I'm just trying to, okay, they don't. Well, and now they're starting to talk about, because we're still being sensitive, uh, upon you. But then they just started to take their own, and we, and we were like, whoa, it was very hard to see. Well, I did figure out that, I just asked for the, I see this on the maybe, to, that's why it's really nice, yeah.
Well, yeah, sure, we did, yeah.
Well, yeah, well. Now, we're playing. Hi, Travis.
Hello.
How's he been doing?
He's all good.
What's she gonna be for Halloween?
Uh, she's Luigi and moves more of.
Oh, dear.
Nerds. That's what they'll be next year, that whole nerd standup. So they are, really, too.
Addie's been dancing about, yeah. The guy was.
Hi, cool.
The guy, perfect. Wearing a little shirt, and wearing a little red tee tee, and, or hiding out, then she's, oh, very, very lucky. One's chance, then, um. When he was coming, I'm, I was, he was taking a pop lap, he was, uh, easier to wear, didn't he? R is abandoned, they didn't pick something, and he said, I know he's never gonna wear it, he's pretty long. Um, really long, because we, we used to be on the way, maybe. You know, there is a guy, that, that, I don't know, whatever that is, I think that's what it is, you know, you tell him, bomb jacket, and talk that, and, yeah, that's kind of surprise. I asked if he's gonna wear it, and he said, yeah, it's like, hey, dude. They don't go, they don't operate, they don't put the TV, everything's a same order, so they always, they want to use it out, so they, 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 oh. Yeah. And I'm, they, maybe not, I haven't had it on, maybe, so it's like, they're like, yeah, yeah. Halloween. My father, he was very tired, and, and, yeah. I mean, I was, you know, I didn't want to wait, that's probably, I get away. I've been a lot, I'm thinking, not many of the last, all my. I always try to have some pitch call at work, and then have some, that's not possible, it's not up to you, but. Yeah, that's what they're telling on stage, and. So I had this, I thought it, oh, not a lot of talk, but you know, you can. You know, and you get, and I'm, I think it's not like, they, you know, they talking about, they have sales, and you know, have topics, and that's not very. Well. They really have a skill, isn't it? Probably, probably where that is, and, yeah.
Good standing, you know.
Yeah.
Thank you all, thank you.
It's starting on, starting on, I want to, I want, I want, but we're, I think, probably, this is what, I'm, so. So it's, 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 it's. Now. Yeah.
For Gibson.
Yeah, I see one.
I mean, people, you know, that, believe me.
It's written, and this is part of the thing, you know. Well, my question is weird, but we did, we, we, we have, it's, 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 it's. We're in the, speaking, I'm, 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 though, options, very, very, I'm, 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 like, the video. I see, I'm serving all ways, yeah. But, 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 but.
My policy, I have to, I'm sorry, just, you know, you're, you're on, right? But, so, there's, it's not really a way, because, uh, you can, uh, some, that's the thing, so. You can, you can, like, stand.
Did you, I didn't, do you remember that thing today?
Oh, that, I know, I know, that's the one.
I'll send it, if anyone can say to themselves, and discuss, they don't have any, none of this.
Yeah, you want to give them, like, thirty, ninety.
Let's see the destination first. Um, the county pastel is set for November eighth, um, the county, they've been on partial, it's significant, would. Uh, serve in public good, they're available under Chevy nine point eight oh four, and I would ask for a. Motion to appoint.
Well, yeah, sure.
Yeah, not, not, not to appoint, I'm just asking for a motion to appoint, um. Mr. Jeremy Myers is offered to be better at the county pastel for, uh, an impartial, which the county. Uh, they serve the public interest, uh, under the statute, or, uh, when it, which is the. You know, definitely, and just stay around, post hoc, every, since, since they did, they did, so, it's, it's, it's.
I see.
That's right. All birds are on.
Oh, that's Mr. Myers, now. I thought it was a way, so, like, it's, 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 you know, it's.
So you don't need to be kidding me?
Yeah.
But then I look down, try to see.